The 13th and begin with old business, the minutes of the January 8th meeting. 6th, sorry, January 6th. Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve, Madam Chair.
I second the motion. Thank you. All in favor, please say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And so there's nobody making mo— okay, that's approved. COVID-19 relief funding, Kathleen or whomever?
This will be Mark Gasaway. I've asked him to provide an update on the funding that we've already spent through this year. And then in the new business, we'll be talking about some additional funding that would be coming. So I'll hand it over to Mark Gasaway.
Good morning, counsel. Am I, am I? Audio? Good. All right. Thank you for this opportunity to, to give this report. And actually, I would like to share with you just a sneak preview of a document that we are preparing. This is, this is a draft, so I don't have the final, but it, it may be final tomorrow for the retreat. We're just, just verifying a few numbers. This is a summary of the CARES Act fund that have been distributed by the county. And I would just want to highlight a few things. We've grouped this into three categories. One is our community and economic support. The second is the government services that we provided. And then the third is the public health response. You can see that the total of CARES Act funding that we've distributed so far has been almost $50 million. And those are divided into these three main categories. This slide, this report has some of the, the matrix of those, those individuals and households that have been impacted by the support. We have a lot of detail behind it, but I wanted the council to have something that they would be able to have. I know you get asked a lot of questions about this. So this will be provided, and again, we're just finalizing this report today. And hopefully I can distribute copies at your retreat tomorrow. So I don't know if you have any questions regarding this particular slide. This is the funding that we have already received. So this is the, the 2020 CRF funding. And as you may or may not know, the ability to spend some of this funding, particularly through the Health Department, has been extended. However, this is what we anticipate, so. Any questions from counsel on this?
Are there questions of the counsel?
Yeah, Mark, are we gonna, or Kathleen, are we gonna put this out to the public, press release type?
Yes, this will be available. Well, putting it out to the public will be someone else's office. But this is a report that we will give to counsel, and I would anticipate that counsel will want to publish this or have it available on the website, so.
Or proactively put it out, yeah. The press release of some kind.
One of the things that I would like to share is, and I, I know some of the comments may be getting to counsel directly, but we have received a significant number of responses from the citizens through the agencies that have distributed these funds, through Clark P D, through the Greater Vancouver Chamber of Commerce, of those businesses and individuals that receive these grants. And it is heartwarming. I can't think of another word to describe the response that the citizens have received. I only wish we had the ability to, to do more because it has been so impactful in the lives of individuals and those businesses that have, the county has been able to support. I will detail out some of those responses and, and give those to you at a, at another time, so.
And if I may, Madam Chair, go ahead.
So, Mark, I think this is a great slide, and I, hopefully you will not just post it, but once it finalized and approved, that we'll do a press release on it. I guess my question is, I don't know if Vanessa's still on and has some comment. Of the 11,000-plus residents supported, have we identified any group or groups that have been left behind that have not benefited from the support that we've so far disseminated? I'm just looking for gaps that we may need to fill with future funding, relief funding?
Yeah, that, that 11,000 residents, that relates primarily to those that received help from the P D, from Clark P D, through the Energy Program. So those were grants that were given directly to residents for utilities. So, and then there's just a variety of metrics here. I don't know of any specific group that we have not been able to address. That information may come quicker to you rather than to me. I, I know who we have helped, and, and we can give you more information on that, so.
Counselor Ketulah Medvedji, yes, we have served over 1,300 people for rental assistance, but we still have a wait-list that we need to address with some future funding.
Thank you, Vanessa. Okay, did you have more to report to us, Mark, at this point?
Yes.
Okay.
This is, this is, will be a report for the CR funding that we have received. The new stimulus bill, which was approved on the 27th of December, I believe, the date, that is going to provide new funding, and it will be focused in a couple of different areas. I'm already working with Vanessa's staff, Community Services. The, one of the main focuses of the new funding is a program called Emergency Rental Assistance. And we don't have an exact number. The Washington State has received the allocation for the state. However, under this new stimulus, Clark County is now considered a direct recipient. So we will no longer have to go through the state to receive our allocation for the new stimulus funds, which helps us in two, in, in many ways, but also requires us to do more work as well. Because as a direct recipient, we will be, have additional requirements. However, we're working with that, that program, just, again, a rough calculation would, would, will mean that we will receive somewhere between $15 and $20 million for the Emergency Rental Assistance Program. There's also a program which will go directly to our Public Health Department, and the estimation there is upwards of $20 million that we can use through the year 2021. The limitations right now are, are for the entire calendar year rather than a piece of next year. So we're still learning about those programs, but there are significant amounts of dollars that will be coming into the county in both of those areas. So I just wanted to let counsel know that we are in the works. We, we have made application for the Emergency Rental Assistance Program. The money coming to the Health Department, or the, our Public Health, Clark County Public Health, also is coming, but it comes through a different channel. So we will be getting that information shortly, so.
Okay, so that was part of your 2.2 new business, correct? So is that correct, Mark?
Yes, I didn't really look at the agenda, sorry.
Okay, so let's move on. Did, is there anything else, Vanessa, that you have for us? Or is there anything that you have for us under old business and the COVID relief funding, other than responding to the question of, of Counselor Medvedji?
No, I, I just sent Mark and EMO, there's such an echo, just to make sure that all of our COVID-19 money was included in that slide. Because we got some directly from the federal and the state.
Yes, and, and just clarification there, Vanessa, this is primarily the, the main sources. There has been additional grants that we have received that aren't included in that slide. Some of the ones that went through community development, elections received a grant to help with the elections, and then the courts have also received small grants. So this, this slide includes the, those major sources. There are some other grants that did not come through our control process. So does that answer?
Yeah, it sounds like that answers a question. However, it raises another, which is, I actually think that we should try to bring all of those funds together if we're going to report to the public, because we shouldn't leave any out. So I know that may, that may make your job a little bit harder, but I do believe that we should pull all of those funds together and be able to report that to the public. Because I think it's important that they know.
Yes, I agree. I agree.
Kathleen, am I doing my staff report now or in the new business?
I believe in new business. Is that correct, Kathleen?
That is, and you can certainly do continue with the 2.2 now, if you would like, Vanessa, just to finish up that topic, since Mark has already discussed it.
Okay, why don't we go ahead and do that, counsel? Let's just, let's just go ahead and allow Vanessa to give her report, and then we'll move back to the other items under new business. Vanessa?
Thank you. So today, we come in with a staff report. We are looking for approval to today to accept the money from the Department of Treasury. And I'm going to ask Michael to give a brief overview of the, of the funding, and then we're here to answer any question.
Good morning, Chair Quiring, Counselors, Michael Torres, Clark County Community Services. And just following Vanessa's question or, or request, we do not know, as Mark Gasaway alluded to, we do not have a lot of information on this funding yet. Most of what we know is actually requested in the staff report. And basically, we believe, based on the formulas like that the Department of Treasury has provided, that we will receive somewhere along the line of between 14.6, and as Mark Gasaway indicated, maybe up to 20 million to provide rental assistance to moderate and low-income households in the county, and also utility assistance. And that these funds would be available for our use through the 31st of December. About 65% of the funds would need to be obligated, however, by the 30th of September. Based on our experience with the State Emergency Rental Assistance Program last year, we are very confident that it will be very easy to expend those funds well before the 31st of December. To give you an idea, the Emergency Rental Assistance Program that was provided from the state went into effect the 24th of August. We had expended about $8 million of funds for rental assistance out into the community by the 30th of December. So the, the need in this community is certainly out there for these funds. The biggest challenge we are going to have is that one of the many requirements that is coming with these federal funds, on the positive side, they're not requiring any match, and they're not requiring any share. But the challenge that they do have is that 90% of the funds provided need to go out into the community in form of direct financial assistance. And the remaining 10% is all that is available for any of the direct program operating costs, any administrative costs, no indirect costs or negotiated indirect rates by any agency that receives this funds is allowed in that. So as, as Mark mentioned, the fact that we are being direct recipients, it is going to create a lot more work. 10% is usually very, very thin to operate with as it is, and that includes for any of the service providers that we use to distribute these funds. So we're going to be working really hard to identify how to do that. And, and that is basically what we know to this point. The state's first brief regarding these, these funds is tomorrow. Immediately after this meeting, myself, Larry Stafford, Mark Gasaway, and our finance manager have a meeting about this. But we wanted to make sure that the counsel is aware, and they are ready for us to be in the process of receiving these funds, the setting up programs, working on contracts. And Vanessa, is there anything else you would like me to cover?
No, just thank you. And again, the 10% admin needs to be shared between our department, Clark Public U Ts, and all the non-proper providers. And so the other piece is, is we're asking you to prove them, so we can be ready to accept it, go into contracts, and immediately put the service.
Okay, I, I do have just a couple of questions. This, as you gave the report, Michael, just it, it triggered a couple of questions. Do you have any idea, or Mark, anybody who's dealing with these funds, when the state distrib— when we went through the state, do we have an idea of how much the state used for administrative costs? That's number one. Number two, I'll just ask the two questions and then see if I can get them. What, what would, what do you predict would be the administrative cost? If 10% is thin, what are, what, what would be your estimate of what those actual costs are?
So let me, let me, and then Michael jump in. So the state allowed us to have program staff charge and then admin. This is now combining both into that 10%. And so, Michael, do you have any more?
No, other than what the state charged for administrative costs internally to the state, and what their average admin costs. I do not have information on that.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate, appreciate that. Okay, so this, are we going to act upon this then? The counsel?
May I ask you a question, Madam Chair?
Counselor Medvedji, yeah.
Thank you. So I just want to focus on rental assistance with the program that's already been in place and what we project. Do we feel as if we've captured the entire need within the county? So for instance, if a landlord has a tenant or two or more that aren't paying rent, have we captured, do we know who they are? And is it the landlord that simply applies for this, for these payments, for the money owed to them? I mean, what do, what do we, what have we accomplished so far in that regard? And, and what more of a need is there for this year?
Good morning, Counselor Medvedji. So to this point, we have provided rental assistance to just under 1,400 households. And that's over 5,000 months of rental assistance. With the state eviction prevention rental assistance funds, the landlord was not allowed to apply directly. It had to be the household. The landlord did have to provide some additional documentation. One of the interesting changes with these federal funds is that the landlord will be allowed to apply directly on behalf of the tenant, which should indicate, you know, which should make more people be able to receive this assistance. Regarding that, is, that will the need be completely met between the state emergency rental assistance funding and disfunding? I, I do not believe so. The emergency rental assistance funding from the state, I mean, as, as I mentioned, we fully expended that between August and December. A lot of the households that have not received assistance yet have had arrears in their rents accumulating, which increases the amount of assistance that they need. And with the state emergency rental assistance program, the maximum rental assistance that was allowed was six months. Most of the people receiving rental assistance only received up to three months of rental assistance, just based on the timing of, of those programs. Also, based on the original estimates Commerce gave us, based on our poverty rates, they thought about 8,000 households would need rental assistance. And as I mentioned, so far, we have about 1,400 households. The last thing I would say to that is all these numbers I have mentioned really are rental assistance for households and individuals that are currently housed. Both the state eviction prevention rental assistance program and these new funds really focus on preventing evictions because of the economic crisis caused from the COVID pandemic. You know, things like avoiding the, the eviction cliff after the eviction moratoriums expire. These are not, none of these have been funds that have really been able to be focused on the population in our community that is currently unhoused.
Michael, if I could just add a little bit to that as well, thank you. Counselor, there's, there's a lot of things we don't know yet about this program. What we do know is that the Department of Treasury is, in their formula, about 45% of the available funding is going directly to direct recipients. That will be including Clark County. That, that means that 55% of the funding will be going to the state for the state to allocate. And we don't know anything about how they're going to do that yet. We're not so, so in addition to the direct funding that we receive, we may be eligible for 50, the other 55%, we just don't know yet. So the other nuances about this program, it requires individuals or those who qualify to re-qualify every three months. So there's some nuances to this program that are different, and the period covered is a longer period. So we're still learning all, all of these, so it's difficult to answer your question, yes or no. But we are going to, you know, we are going to participate, you know, counsel willing, so.
And I just want to add, we're going to build off of what we already, we already created from the state. So we're using the same providers, same Clark Public U T system. So we're just going to move forward. We're going to ask you to prove, to prove this. So once we get more, we can move right into contracts with those providers.
So that's what, that's what I was thinking when, when you noted that earlier. It does help not to reinvent the wheel and, and the, you know, reduce costs, administrative costs or whatever, to try to help to stay within or not go over too much, that 10%. So are there other questions of the counsel just before we move to approve this? I see none. Could I get a motion then to approve accepting this grant, these grant funds?
A motion to approve, Madam Chair.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the, the grant for community, for the county manager to sign the grants and contracts related to accepting this and distributing federal emergency rental fund assistance provided by U.S. Treasury. Is there further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Motion passes. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Michael and Vanessa. Okay, we'll move then to the first item under new business, proclamation for National School of Choice Week. I think you got the documentation to look at this draft. I would just note that there is a typo in the draft in the 1, 2, 3, 4, the fifth, whereas that should be educational variety, not, not note, but not only helps diversify. So with that improvement, I guess we're, we're looking for the ability to put this on the agenda, is that it?
So typically with a proclamation that we have not done before, of course, there are a, a number of the proclamations that we do every single year. But with ones that we haven't done before, we bring them to council time to see if there's a majority of the council that wants to put this on for the agenda. So that's the question today. I apologize for the typo. I'll make sure that if the council agrees it, that we get the, the correct version.
Yeah, that's fine. Any comments of counsel?
Well, so I'm unclear. So I appreciate the editor-in-chief's comment on making the, correcting the typo. But do we need to vote today on this or not?
So we would need at least three to place it on the agenda for the council meeting next week. Circulate it to, for signature ahead of time, so that it would be prepared for next Tuesday.
Okay. I'm one.
I'm two.
Okay, we got three. Moving to the next proclamation, which is Human Trafficking Awareness and Prevention Month. I'm all for this.
So I did, this is Kathleen. I did send an email this morning. The Human Trafficking Task Force of Clark County would like the council to recognize Human Trafficking Awareness and Prevention Month, which is in January. So they are asking for this proclamation also to be added to next week's agenda.
As I said, I'm very much in favor of this. Other counselors?
Well.
Okay, good, great.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you. Counselor reports.
Chair, I have one. Last night at the Ctran board meeting, Mayor Ann McInerney Ogilvy was elected chair for the coming year, and I was elected vice chair.
Congratulations.
Yeah, congratulations on that. And I did have a co— a comment if Counselor Lance was done. Okay, so I had sent out, I met with the ecology, the, the regional rep and another teammate recently, mainly focusing on the Lackamas watershed, Lackamas Lake, Round Lake, Fallen Leaf Lake. And out of that came a request by them to do, to make a presentation to us. One small component of what we were discussing was basically manure management throughout the county. I thought it would be good to give them an opportunity. I think it's going to be discussed in the future. I, I'm still waiting on an update on what happened with the interlocutory agreement between CAMUS and the county council. But I, I also met with the director of the Lower Columbian Fish Recovery Board, and they have a keen interest and role in our watershed as well. So CAMUS is waiting on some grants. The Department of Ecology is probably going to have a main, their main effort in the future will be on the Lackamas watershed. It's on their, on their radar screen, as we used to say. So I think there's a lot of momentum for us to partner with CAMUS and Clean Water Department particularly, but other state agencies and organizations. So I'm hoping we can move that interlocutory agreement along if it hasn't already been signed. I'm not sure what the status is, but, so I just wanted to let you know about that meeting I had with Ecology, and I'm hopeful that we give them some time to make a presentation, not only to give some visibility to that. not only to give some visibility to that new program, but also to help inform us on future decisions.
So this is Kathleen, just, just so you're aware, I have left a message with the city manager in CAMUS. We have not received a signed interlocal agreement back. I will call him again probably in the next couple of days, just to touch base. And then once we get that, our, I did talk to staff yesterday. We'll bring back the conversation during a council time agenda before it goes on the council meeting for approval so that everybody is on the same page on what our role is with that interlocal agreement. So I will let you guys know as soon as I hear anything back from CAMUS.
Thank you very much. That's all I had, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Other reports? Okay, Lindsey, do we have a report on policy issues?
I have just two quick things for you. The first is that we do, even though Monday is a holiday, it is not a holiday for the legislature, so they will be in session. And so we still will have our call. So that information and the information for members of the public to be able to listen in on that is available as well. But just as a reminder, it's a holiday, but we still will be having that call. The other thing I wanted to let you know, I just heard from Josh that the legislators received a report recently that the total estimated loss in transportation revenue due to COVID is about $524 million this biennium. And early estimates anticipate a loss of an additional $234 million next biennium. So right now, it doesn't look like we're going to have an impact on the 179th Street projects. Everything's, you know, still on the list, as it will. But it's just one of those situations that paints the picture of kind of where we're at with those state transportation projects and making sure that we work to preserve, to keep that 179th Street project within the budget. That's all I have.
Great, thank you. Do we have, oh, whoops, do we have any work session requests? Sorry, I skipped that again.
There's no work session request today.
Okay, all right. Okay, we are going to go into executive session then for two pending litigations for an hour and 10 minutes, as well as RCW 4230 110 1G for 15 minutes. And there will likely be action afterwards. So there's possible action afterwards. So we'll have to come out, we'll, we'll go, we'll go out of this, go into executive session, and then come back out and adjourn this, this meeting. So if there's nothing else, I will see you over in executive session. Thank you.